We will call tonight's meeting to order at six oh five P M. Um, Councilmember Hornick, could you lead us in pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And if you ever call on the Department of State.
All right. Linda, could you lead us in a roll call?
Hey, Councilmember Hornick.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi, and Marissa.
Here. All right. I wasn't sure what. We weren't voting on anything. So now that we are all present, um, is there any reordering of the agenda tonight?
Um, no.
Perfect. We will move on to public comment, any items not agendaed tonight. Do we have any public comment? We have a few here for agenda item, anything else?
We do know.
No one online? Perfect, we'll move along to consent calendar. Tonight, our consent calendar items are minutes of September eleventh, twenty twenty five, regular city council meeting. List of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five and fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. Monthly treasures report August thirty first, twenty twenty five. Resolution number twenty five dash twenty six, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bilton, California, declaring and certifying the results of the City of Bilton. Special municipal election held on August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. Consideration of M O U with S B C A G for the Sanas Valley River Trail, Santa Inas Valley Regional Community Connector. Approval of Office of Traffic Safety, O T S Grant Agreement and Consulting Services Agreement with Move Santa Barbara. Discussion of Contract Agreement for Investment Advisory Services with Optimize Investment Partners, Partners L L C. Would any of these items like to be pulled this evening?
I would like to pull item five, please.
Okay. So we will move that.
Is, um, sir, is that just pull for a separate vote or is that all for discussion?
I'd like to discuss it.
Okay, um, then my recommendation would be to move that under business items tonight.
Okay, so we will move that to item, we'll make item number five into item number thirteen for the evening. Great. So separate from item five, is there a motion to approve items one, two?
I'm sorry, sir, I believe you have a public comment on the consent.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, but it is for that.
So for the gentleman, for, uh, you will be, your public comment will be when the item comes up for the agenda tonight.
Oh, for number.
It would now be number thirteen. Thank you.
Generally as a general comment rather than on that specific.
Sure, we can save you some time here, sure, if you like to, so, um, so we'll do the public comment on this and then we'll entertain a motion for the remaining items. Is that best? We're, we're doing this live right now. Okay, so we'll take your comment right now and then we'll go into the consent calendar motions. So if we could have Corey Evans, please join us.
All right, well, thank you, uh, members of the council. Uh, my name is Corey Evans. I'm from Dr. J's Bicycle Shop, a business owner here in Bilton, also a member of the San Inas Valley Cycling Club. And I just wanted to speak on behalf of the San Inas Valley Active Transportation Regional Connector. Um, it's a very important connector trail for this community and improves. Um, safety for cyclists, pedestrians and childrens by connecting all the communities of the San Inas Valley. It boosts connectivity to, um, the unincorporated areas of the valley. Um, it also eases traffic congestion. You know, there's a lot of traffic on the two forty six in particular, so it's gonna create more, you know, allow for more people to ride bikes. You know, ride scooters, walking to avoid, um, some of that congestion with fewer car trips. It promotes public health, encourages active transportation, reduces air pollution and supports a daily health, um, exercise. And it enhances property values. Um, it also boosts tourism as a recreational trail for people to come here to the area and, um, you know. Visit the San Inas Valley. Uh, thank you for supporting the San Inas Valley, um, active transportation connector trip. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Right, if I could get a motion for items one, two, three, four, six and seven.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
Councilmember Hornick.
I have staying. I wasn't here last meeting.
So just.
So just the minutes, but the rest I vote to.
Okay, great. And, um, Marissa.
Hi. All right, moving along, we'll go on to our proclamation in honor of National Voter Registration Day, which is September sixteenth, twenty twenty five. So we have our proclamation and then we will have, I don't know, would you like to talk first or read first? What are you feeling tonight? Okay, I'll go first, then you get to do it and then do not leave without the photo op. That's the most critical reason of the evening tonight, okay? So, uh, proclamation recognizing National Voter Registration Day. Whereas voting is both the right and privilege in the United States and the essence of our democracy. And whereas the value of voting in local, state and national elections is an opportunity to express a citizen's voice on community, state and national issues. And whereas National Voter Registration Day is a nonpartisan civic holiday celebrated throughout the United States to create awareness of voter rights and opportunities. And whereas National Voter Registration Day is celebrated on September sixteenth, twenty twenty five, and this year, the ballot will include a special election November twenty twenty five. And in March twenty twenty six, primary elections for local and state offices. And whereas the local League of Women Voters encourage, encourages voting and expanding voter rights and will be conducting public forums in advance of the November special election. Now therefore be it resolved that I Mayor David Silva do hereby proclaim September sixteenth, twenty twenty five as National Voter Registration Day. And affirm the city's commitment to holding free and fair elections while urging all eligible citizens to register to vote and participate in our democracy. Presented this twenty fifth day of September, twenty twenty five. And we are really grateful to have Ms. Tracy Beard joining us today as co-president of the League of Women Voters.
Thank you all. Thank you, um, the league is nonpartisan. We have changed our name. We are the North Santa Barbara County League of Women Voters. We had merged with the Santa Maria League. The league is here to make sure everyone has the right to vote and make sure that we sign up all voters in U S. People that are elected officers and women, so we thank you very much for serving our community because it's a lot to serve the community. So we very much appreciate that. And as we go into Prop fifty, we have no position on it. The league has taken no position and we are taking no position. And we are doing a, what we call a Zoom on October seventh. That'll just be zoomed to pros and cons is all. So thank you very much and thank you for recognizing National Voter Registration Day for everyone on the sixteenth.
Thank you for everything you do and now let's take that photo time, don't, don't. Come on up, come on up.
What time is that on the seventh?
We always have. Yeah, it's always the chair movement.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Bluff with it, there we go. We're proud in everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Pleasure. We'll find out once we sit down and figure out our sighting.
Mine's always too tall. I know.
This feels, it feels right, okay. For number nine, okay.
Today? No.
Wait.
Oh, no. Soccer mom condition, but.
Okay. Um, moving right along, we will now go into public hearings. Seeing none, we will move on to council member comments and items for the evening. So is there any council member comments or items tonight that we need to have discussion of, uh, Councilmember Hornick?
Uh, yes, I would just like to, um. Uh, bring to the attention that the parking lot down behind, uh. The library is nearing completion. I think, uh. Unfortunately, it appears we didn't plan for any tree plantings in that parking lot. I know there's space left over for, uh, maybe surrounding area, but, um, I know that we have an ordinance, uh, or some sort of code. That, uh, requires developments that go on the city to have some sort of canopy coverage. And I think we should look into requiring our own developments to have that same canopy coverage. So I would ask that we maybe formulate a consensus to, to consider that or have staff look into that and what that would look like.
I believe in the last meeting, we asked to have the, uh, canopy ordinance brought back for discussion. Yes, so.
Yesterday?
Uh, no, last meeting? The last meeting.
Oh, great, cool, perfect, no other comments.
Councilmember Sanchez?
I wanted to, uh, thank David Silva for cleaning up the street over on, uh, on two forty six. I saw it on Facebook and that, I want to be went over there and I went over there at Spigot Span. It looks really nice and, um, it was, uh, it recommended for your quick service and, and.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
None tonight.
Um, the only two I had just one was actually to say, um, uh, while doing that, um, Miss, uh, Miss Danny Tupper from Barb Dwyer Salon joined. She was driving by and saw me on the side of the road and she's much faster at picking up trash. And she did it without gloves, which I really just need to say, like, that was a brave moment. So I just really wanted to, want to brave, thank her for that. So just thanks for, like, on the middle of your Sunday morning stopping by to pick up. It really was a testament to, uh, Bealton, Bealton nights. We haven't picked our titling yet, so Bealton nights of that, so thank you for that. Um, the only item I wanted to say that I think we should discuss to bring back for further discussion is, um, as we anticipate a fifth council member joining. Of maybe scheduling a council retreat for us just to have for a discussion, maybe get something on the books to kind of go through. The procedures, policies, how we handle, how we run a meeting and all that. So I was hoping to see if we could get the staff to start looking into what that would look like so we could have an annual retreat. It'll be our first time with all five council members and just kind of have some time to be able to work through our meeting processes and norms and all that stuff.
That would be an agendaized Brown Act meeting.
Mm hmm, yes, it would.
Um, publicly, why don't we just start the meeting when we already have, we go to conferences.
I think it'd be good for us to take some time to have the five of us together kind of go over, uh, everything. I think it'd just be a, a good opportunity for us all to have a chance to spend some time together and kind of make sure we're all. It's running the way we want it to and it's kind of have a self audit within that. So I thought it'd be a useful activity for the five of us to do.
Do we normally have one annual sort of retreat? I feel like ever since I've been here, we've had one at least.
I feel like we have conferences, we usually catch up at conferences.
We used to do retreats prior, prior to.
Property, right? Was the first one I remember?
We did the one, but prior to that, the council would do annual retreats. And prior to COVID, different councils too.
So just an opportunity for us to kind of go through and it'd be a chance to look at our handbook, look at everything together and just kind of make sure it's all up to date and appropriate. I just thought it was a good audit opportunity.
Um, oh, abstain from, from that. I mean, if you, I, 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 I think we meet a lot. Happy to meet. Happy to discuss anything you want to discuss. I, I think, I don't think we need a retreat, but I've heard of my other colleagues.
Yeah, I just, uh, we can have a public meeting before meeting, start a meeting at five one day and do that or maybe, I don't think we need a whole retreat, some. We're all going, are we all in the league city?
No.
Oh.
I, I guess it's just, it's a, it's a chance for the five of us to just go through the handbook, everything. We haven't done that in a while, so if there's, doesn't seem to be appetite for that from a consensus, then we can, uh, move along.
I don't mind doing it, but the next like two months would be really difficult. But I definitely don't mind doing it. I don't mind having like a checkpoint and having everyone kind of like. Meet and do that. I, I think we did it when I very first started and it was helpful as a new council member, um, just with the fact that like the next several months. It's cool, but I, I'm not opposed.
Okay, well, we'll bring it back, we'll, I guess we'll, um.
We, if you, if you think it's important, I'm happy to be there. Just, we have a lot of meetings, town halls and everything else. And I mean, happy to go over the handbook. I, I mean, we all get our training, go to meetings. If, if you want to, I'll do it for you, but I, I don't. I'm disinclined on my initial response, but if you think it's important, I'll be there.
Okay, well, I think we'll just put on the city manager, see what it might look like and.
I will mention to the city manager to discuss it.
Okay, yeah, sounds good. Um, right, moving right along. Oh, yeah. I, okay, gotcha, so that goes here, okay. So we will continue on with, uh, item number nine, oath of office and seating of District Four Councilmember Carla Mead. And, um, it doesn't have a staff contact, so is that you?
It is.
Oh, thank goodness, okay. Yeah, I was like, I hope I don't expect a free form of this, so, um, okay. If you could take us through this, Miss Reed.
So. You can stand on it. I am going to, um, say the oath to you and you just say I do.
Great, so thanks for telling them what to say.
It makes it easier, okay. Um, do you, Carla Mead solemnly affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? Against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States? And the Constitution of the State of California? And you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion? And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter. I do. Great, congratulations. This is your junior high school diploma. And over here, we have your certificate of election and your oath of box.
I was in, I was in middle school for twenty years as a teacher, about time I graduated.
Yes. It's time.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you, thank you. Yes, okay.
Yeah. Well, yeah, yeah, like, as I said, we have to, we, I'm sure you'd like to take photos with people and everything else too, so. Yes, so good, let's take a photo with all of us up here and then, yeah, we'll do the. We're all doing it live, so let's start a group photo together.
I mean. Good on you, John. Can I get a picture, John?
Oh, of course, okay, great. Take a group photo, take the group.
Okay. Yeah.
Let's just do that, let's take a, uh, I just make it official to the microphone, let's take a ten minute recess so everyone can just do photo ops at this point. This is purely just for grandizing now.
If you are, like, if you are wearing.
Bring us back to order six twenty-seven. And we are still on item number nine, and we do have two public comments for item number nine. First up we'll have is Ms. Victoria Pointer.
Thank you, Mayor Silver and council members. Um, I am so proud of you, Carla, and that is why I'm up here today. Um, it's been a long time since I've really been in here, other than when you first started to look at the position. And I want to say that she has worked really, really hard to get to that chair. And, um, I want her to know that she has the support of myself as well as a big part of the community and District Four loves you. A lot of you probably don't know, but I think I'm the only living council member from our first council. So I've been around for a long time. But anyway, Carla, I just am here to give you my love and ask for all of you to please work together and make this town a better town and make it greater than it is. Um, you guys are on a great path. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then we'll have and then we have Christian Alonso.
Hello, uh, Christian Alonso. I'm the Chair of the Santa Barbara County Democratic Party and to Carla, uh, to the Councilmember Mead, excuse me. Uh, I just want to say congratulations on a well-fought victory. And, um, I think some of the, uh, first conversations that I had with you, uh, about, uh, approaching this race were about how committed you were to being a representative for every single person in this city. And, uh, I just can't say how excited I am to see you, uh, fulfill that promise, right? And be, be a representative for this city, regardless of who supported you or did not. And, um, uh, that is something that is very rare in, in a, uh, in a, in a person seeking political office. And, um, I just want to say uh, how grateful I am for your partnership, for your tenacity in this and for your willingness to take on this responsibility. Um, and I just am so excited to see what you all do together, uh, to make this city a better place for everybody who lives here. Uh, and to be part of this large fabric of our beautiful county of Santa Barbara. So thank you so much and, uh, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. And now it's the anticlimactic moment where I say, time for written communications. Do we have any written communications?
Uh, no, I see.
All right. Um, we are going to move into committee reports, but just for the sake of normalizing it, in case you would like to leave this meeting at any moment, you're welcome to get up and leave. We don't judge that. It's just, it's an awkward exit to the side there. So we'll move on to committee reports. Councilmember Hornick, any committee reports?
Nope.
Councilmember Sanchez?
To, uh, had a CCWA meeting today. And very good, our water situation's looking a little better and, uh, I think as well. And I had a chamber uh, meeting for the visitor, the visitor's bureau. And, uh, that was good too. Nothing to report.
Councilmember Mead, I assume nothing?
No.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes, I was able to attend an SB CAG meeting as your understudy. I woefully underfilled your shoes, let me tell you. That place is, uh, awesome, super kind of intimidating, but really awesome to go and see. So I'm glad I got to see it. They were talking a lot about, um, EV bus programs in Santa Maria and some projects that they were building in Santa Maria. Um, the one thing that really touched for Beelton was talking about the community trail, the, the community connector. And we had a really good presentation as to where we're at financially and the partnership between the tribe, the city of solving and the city of Beelton. Um, the city of Beelton is the only city to be fully funded for a hundred percent design. Uh, not, sorry, not only city, the only entity involved, um, to be fully funded for the design and planning phase of the corridor, I believe they're calling it. So that's pretty cool. Solving and the tribe are still working on, uh, finishing their funding to get a hundred percent design. I think they said I think they said that they would be at like sixty or seventy percent design, but don't quote me on that. Um, but it was just very interesting to hear and very interesting chambers and I definitely recommend going to see a meeting if you've never been.
Can I ask a follow up on that?
Yeah.
So when the, talking about the San Antonio Valley River Trail, which is a considerable hole. Um, that's what the SB CAG meeting was about, you attended?
It was one of the items.
One of the items. Okay, cool. And so like they were saying that Beelton is fully funded for that.
For the planning, so fully funded for planning. Um, the tribe has received two grants, one that they already have in hand and one that is being held up with the federal government, um, changes and stuff.
Is that, is that for planning as is like a DG? Uh, should trail or is that like a, an expanded trail?
Should we?
Then this is, we're, we're still okay because this is still the report of.
Right. I just wanted to let you know too that we have Mr. Luna here who is, who is on, who is our representative for too. So just so you know, if you don't get it here, we also have Mr. Luna in the audience here who can answer that further too.
They did not specify and I did not ask. They just said of the design planning.
SB CAG said of the design planning Beelton was fully funded.
Correct. They didn't specify as to how and what the plans look like, but I also didn't ask.
Interesting.
Yeah, they had some pictures and renderings of stuff, but it didn't specify.
Thank you. Anything else?
Actually, if you go to the SB CAG website and they, but they had a presentation that had some stuff on there that may have given you more information. So there is a presentation in the packet if you want to look at it.
I was gonna, I'll ask.
Okay, cool.
Um, only times I had was I attended our three CE conference, which handles our energy from Monterey down to Santa Barbara. And the big conversation was on PCIA, which is power change indifference adjustments, which is as thrilling as it sounds. And, um, that is, uh, basically what three CE members have to pay to the legacy IOUs such as PG&E and SoCal Edison. It's basically the cost sharing from contracts taken in two thousand and five to two thousand and fifteen for solar. And since we've moved away from being PG&E customers, it's us paying our share of the grid kind of capital project improvements that they did. And then finally, we just wanted to give the update from the, um, I'm on the the affordable housing element for us, just to give an update that we attended the Village Senior Apartment, uh, meeting they have every week. They are expecting to be done with, uh, construction on that October tenth. Um, so they will wrap that up. And I just want to say thank you to, uh, people helping people in San Diego Community Outreach, who has been doing the facilitation for trying to get the uptake from our local community. Uh, as of today, we were informed that PHP confirmed that they had twenty-two, all twenty-two of their applicants have been accepted and moved into the interview process for that, which is a very promising thing. So it's twenty-two of their uh, clients who live locally, who are moving into the process to interviews for the Village Senior Apartments. So we thank you to everyone who's handled all that outreach for that.
I had a question that, um, can we go to, on a meeting over there? You say there's a meeting every week. I haven't been, I usually like to go over and just check it out and see what.
Oh, yeah. So it's been all, it's all Zoom. So we haven't been allowed onto the property because they don't have the insurance has not said anyone's allowed to step foot on that yet. Um, but once they do, I'll let you know, they were talking about when they'd be able to schedule community tours and make sure that I'll let you know when they get that taken care of.
Do you know who's operating that program? Is it Kuzbarko or is it people helping people?
Well, no, it's, uh, the, it is Cabrillo Economic Development Company, CEDC.
Yeah, CEDC.
Yeah.
Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation.
Corporation, thank you. And PHP and SIV Community Outreach has just been working to try and do the, um, kind of outreach to get locals to be able to apply into it, but it's all handled through CEDC.
Is that? Is that local?
CEDC isn't local, they're, um, Southern California.
Yeah.
Are they an operator? They're operating outside?
Yeah.
No, you don't have the knowledge.
Yeah, yeah, no, they're, I, I just want to make sure. Yeah. So they are the ones who like are managing this whole, similar to how we had Palm communities, but it was like Palm communities built, but housing authority kind of took the lead on the staffing. CEDC is all one, they're, they're building and.
Over and operating.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right along, we will now move on to business item number 10, which is consideration of appointment to the Planning Commission. And our staff contact for this is Plan Director Andrea Kiefer.
Good evening, Mayor Silva and members of City Council. Um, as you are aware, uh, the 2024 general election created a vacancy on the City Council, uh, based on, uh, David Silver winning the mayor seat, uh, thereby leaving the District Four Council seat vacant. Uh, because there was not a representative from District Four to participate in the, in the appointment of a Planning Commission member, a new commissioner could not be seated until after the special election. Um, as we know, that occurred on August twenty-sixth of this year. And so now that, um, account, the council seat has been filled, it would be appropriate to fill, uh, the vacant Planning Commission seat. Um, staff did advertise the, this Planning Commission seat opening in the local newspaper, the city website and via social media. We did receive one, um, application from Daniel Contreras. And a copy of his application is attached, um, in your packet. And at this time, it would be appropriate for, um, Councilmember Carla Mead to nominate for the City Council to approve, um, the nomination for appointment to the Planning Commission. Uh, just to note, this term would, um, run through December twenty twenty-sixth, uh, twenty twenty-sixth rather. Um, should Councilmember, uh, Mead desire not to appoint this evening, the City Council could direct staff to reopen the recruitment, um, if desired. Um, however, at this time, staff turns it over to the council, uh, to consider, um, an appointment to the PC. I'm available for questions if you have any.
And I believe we have Mr. Contreras and Jans. Would you like to come up and say anything at all or just let your applications stand? Yeah, this is it's, it's a, it's a hot mic tonight. Why not?
I just want to thank you all for the consideration. Uh, I did serve here for, uh, interim term. Uh, and I really enjoyed being a public servant. I worked for the county of Santa Barbara. Uh, like I said, I interned in the community and make sure that, uh, everything that's been, uh, passed to the Planning Commission is something that we could really look into and really, uh, fulfill the economic vitality, also the housing vitality and anything that contributes to our, uh, to our local economy, not only that, but also for the benefit of our community. So, uh, thank you for the opportunity. Uh, congratulations, Councilwoman, uh, Mead. Uh, once again, uh, I would like the opportunity to serve our community. Again, uh, I'm a public servant at heart and this is one of the ways I could do that.
So I guess in this scenario, it's Miss Need.
Mr. Contreras, thank you for your application and thank you for your previous six months of service on the Planning Commission. I read through your application and I think you and I have very similar goals. One of the things that stood out to me is this idea of balancing economic development and safeguarding, um, Beelton's unique character and values. And I think that that is something that every person in this room can agree to. Um, and everyone sitting on this dais as well. So I would like to nominate Daniel Contreras to appointment to the Planning Commission.
That's second.
Great.
All right, uh, Councilmember Mead.
I.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
Councilmember Hornick.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
And Mayor Silva.
Hi. Welcome to the plank, Ms. Ms. And now you do have to come up and take a photo with all of us. So we'll take a, yeah, another one. So we'll take a, yeah, come on up, what's your? Yeah, we waited till everyone took big bites. Move these over here again. The coordination.
Love to though.
All right.
There I go.
I'll stand on the side.
Here, slide this side off.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. We should just take a photo after every single item. Let's just do that. I hope all the people are ready to go. It's getting very, was it, was it white snake? Was that the thing like eighties glam rock? Was that a reference? It's like, is that? I don't really know. It was before my time. Um, that's on record. Uh, okay, moving right along. Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
So I just want to yeah, say for the record, Councilman Sanchez uh, has a family member who works for. Uh, the company that puts on Fall Fest. Uh, he has consistently recused himself from any matter related to Fall Fest. Uh, since that employment began and he's done so again right now. So anybody watching at home, that's why you're going to see four for this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving right along. We're on item number eleven, consideration of approval of Fall Fest Special Event and Funding Request for the Fall Festival Event and our staff contact will be Plan Director Andrea Kiefer.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Silva and members of City Council. As you are aware, the Fall Fest event has been occurring on the Avenue of Flags since two thousand two. Andres Nuneo with Empuigo Events, uh, the event organizer um, is here this evening. And he is planning to bring the event back again uh, for the fourth year again this November. Uh, this event again would be held in the same area that it has been held in the previous years on the Avenue of Flags. Uh, with a very similar, almost the same um, setup as last year. Um, as was the case in previous years, street closures will be necessary in order to accommodate the event. Uh, these street closures will occur from November sixth through November tenth. And the event will occur um, November seventh through November ninth. Um, in order to close off the portions of the roadway that are necessary, temporary traffic control devices will need to be placed within the event area and its surroundings. Uh, last year, the applicant requested and received uh, ten thousand dollars from the city to help pay for these traffic control devices. This year, the applicant is requesting eleven thousand uh, from the city to cover the costs of these devices. Um, and the reason for the one thousand dollar increase is um, cited is due to the cost to the increased cost to rent um, these devices. So um, what would be covered by this eleven thousand dollars if granted to the applicant includes equipment for road closures, detour signs, safety fencing, traffic control guards, things like that. Um, and if the city grants this funding to the organizer, it would be on a reimbursement base basis, meaning the receipts would. Be provided to the city and then the city would then reimburse based upon actual costs. So it's a maximum or up to eleven thousand dollars based upon receipts. Um, so with that, the recommendation this evening is in two parts. Uh, first, that the City Council review the Fall Festival Event Plans that are attached in the staff report. Um, and consider approving the event. Um, and additionally, uh, secondly, staff recommends that the City Council consider authorizing the funding requests um, by the applicant in the amount of eleven thousand dollars. Uh, that concludes my report. Um, Andres Nuneo is here in the audience tonight um, and is also available to answer any questions if you have any.
Uh, yeah, if we'd like to come up and make any statements before we go, questions?
All right, let me know if uh, you need to take a photo. I'm ready. Uh, so uh, one minor correction. It's it's our it is our fifth year. We're excited. It's our fifth. I know, I know. It seems like it it just started a month ago. Uh, but yes, uh, we appreciate all the support we've got from the city of Buellton. Uh, when we made the move to come over here in twenty twenty-one and uh, it's been. Amazing and the community's really accepted it and uh, we've done our. Uh, due diligence and trying to get people from outside of the air to come spend some uh, evenings and put some heads in beds. Uh, as well as spending some money in local uh, restaurants and and businesses. So uh, we appreciate the support. If you guys have any questions, I can. Answer them in detail because it all lives up here.
Perfect. Uh, any questions for the applicant?
I had a question. So uh, hi Andres. I was actually gonna ask John this because he would recall, but um, I thought some of the money we've spent last year for traffic was gonna be to procure. Traffic equipment so we didn't have to spend so much money in the future. Do you recall?
Uh, so we've always i- in total, uh, the equipment. Traffic management uh, supply or supplies as for all the detours, signage, fencing and security also uh, totals over twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, what we've tried to do is in in order to do it downtown and shut down all the stuff that we do. Uh, to put it on Avenue of the Flags is just say, hey, can can we get a little bit of help financially to continue to do so? Uh, with it being a free admission event, there's only so much money we can make in terms of sponsorships and and vendors and alcohol sales and carnival. Uh, so we've kind of just stayed in this general range, even though it cost us much more to do so. Uh, we've just kind of stayed in that range. Of saying, okay, can you at least help us with the fencing and the traffic management? Uh, signage and and road closures and. And we'll handle all the security that it takes to do so as well as people.
No, I appreciate that. I guess I don't know if Ms. Kiefer, you recall, I know Scott's not in, but um. And Rose is out too unfortunately, but. I I thought like the previous. Uh, last year, I thought like some of the money was going to go to like purchasing fencing or something. So we'd have it on. On hand and we wouldn't have to.
Yeah, yeah, that would that would mean that the city would actually go towards purchasing some of that stuff, uh, which we're talking about roughly sixteen hundred feet in fencing. Alone. So in order for that to happen, it would be like, where can the city? Store that. And yes, we would love, if you guys did that, we would love to utilize it for stuff like. The Buellton Brew Fest, Wine and Chili, any other additional events that uh, happen in the city. Uh, but that, as far as I know, it's not. Been a discussion.
I don't recall. I I think Rose is on. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I I am on there. We did not do any purchasing of any type of fencing or or that type of material. In the past or last year for sure.
Do you recall though? I thought I thought we discussed that. I mean, I'm getting head shakes from my colleagues and maybe I'm out to lunch, but.
I'm up here a lot, so.
No, no, no. I mean, I distinctly remember. That conversation though.
No, I know we utilized our speed trailer to assist.
Yep.
Um, you know, to as far as the signage. For traffic, you know, control and diversion. And I believe we had tried to, at the time, because we only had one speed trailer, borrow the other one from. The city is solving uh, for the other speed trailer. Um, but other than that, we. Didn't have any authorization to purchase anything else.
Yeah. So so you you guys have definitely helped us with the one that's on the north end of Avenue of the Flags and then we have rented. The one that's on the south end uh, from traffic management uh, for the CMS board.
Okay. And um, this is a question for staff, but just out of curiosity. Do we know like um, any kind of financial benefit that the city gets from having these events?
I mean, I would say that uh, TOT from, you know, heads in bed as Andres mentioned, um.
Are we tracking that at all? Chamber of Commerce checking that?
Yeah, Kathy would be like the person who's can give you some really solid numbers on those. So we've been. Continuously tracking those since we started back in twenty-one. It's kind of the reason. Why Visit SYV and Discover Buellton have become on as major sponsors for the event is based on our track record of bringing people in uh, from out of the area.
It's an awesome event. I love the event. Kids love the event.
Yeah.
Daughter thinks it's for her birthday.
It is. Tell her it is.
I tell her every.
Every year. We will continue to do this for her birthday every year.
Yeah, right. I'm gonna go hang up a happy birthday sign when you guys aren't looking like, see, they did it for you.
You can put it wherever you want, just like.
Anything else, Councilmember?
No, no, this one.
Councilmember Mead?
I just had a question about the number of security guards because it's in your special event permit that there's going to be, there's going to be sixteen security guards and then two traffic control monitors. And I was just wondering. Is that based on study of population? Like you look at the attendance, is there like some ratio? I mean, I'm grateful. I'm grateful. I'm just want to say I'm grateful that it's in there because having people on site is the best way to protect the citizens. So.
So we have four entrances to the event. So each one of those entrances is always going to be staffed by a security guard. That's just making sure that people don't leave or come in with alcoholic beverages or, you know, or. Not walking straight or any of those types of things. Uh, we have three bars. We have three bars. There's three guards that are each one of those bars that are checking IDs. So in order to get. Because it is an ABC permitted zone for our entire area with guests that are under twenty-one. Uh, in order to have a drink, if you're twenty-one plus, you must have a wristband. In order to get those wristbands, you're going to do it at one of the bars. Then at the north end of Avenue of the Flags and well, what was Damas is now.
Rufus TBO.
Rufus TBO. Uh, we also have a guard up there who kind of is helping us with that uh, residential traffic that can come into as far as a bands go. And then we have two loc- two locations for traffic management. So. Between all of those that are called what we call static guards, the rest are roaming and they do have to take because they're long days, twelve to ten. They take, three of them will take like a break at the same time. So it's kind of like a number we looked at. You know, Buellton Brew Fest, we roughly have uh, twelve guards for a five hour event, but it's a drinking event and we have one entrance. And that's enough for us. So we looked at it in several different ways, but that's the number we're comfortable with and and making sure. And then we've. Shared that information with the Sheriff's Department as well to let them know how many guards we have. And then they do their due diligence. Okay, we're gonna have uh, two dedicated sheriffs. Their dict- uh, the duration of the event, which we're uh. Uh, contracting directly with them this year as opposed to going through the city. Um, so that's something they're comfortable with as well as ABC.
Okay, thank you for explaining that. I just, that to me, like having people on site like that is the best way to make sure problems don't happen. And I was just curious about how that. And I guess like after this year's event, there can be a reflection on how did that go?
Yeah, and it's in this conversation we have ongoing with uh, the Sheriff's Department. Just to say, hey. Are are you guys good with, you know, did it feel safe? Did it look safe? And for us, it it there's a lot of guards walking around. You see them all the time. And then the sheriffs do a great job of just kind of continuously walking around as opposed to like. Finding a little spot to sit at. They they do a good job of of walking around and just being visual uh, to to deter things like that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lewis, any questions?
Nope.
Uh, the only one I had was uh, in terms of, I know we shut down. Um, there's the staff and permit parking only on the parking lot that's right across from the chamber and that area. Yep. I was wondering, what is the play? Like, is that open to the businesses that are there?
Yes, okay, yeah. So. So technically, our road closures begin on Thursday at uh, nine o'clock. But what we do is at the north end, coming south from Avenue of the Flags. We don't close that. So guests can or anyone can still drive through until you get to the driveway into that parking lot. Where you're you, we will force you to turn left. So any of those businesses or residents can still drive all the way down. They can turn right if they live there. And park in their designated parking spot. If you're a business or attending one of the or visiting one of those businesses, you can turn left and still park in that parking lot. Beginning on Friday when we open up, so uh, an hour prior, we then put the residence only road closure sign at the north end coming south. Uh, and there is a guard there. Should anyone say, I live here, I work here, I'm coming to visit a business, we will let them through and they still can access that parking lot. So it's never really closed down, even though we designate that for bands and then also Hotel San Marcos and Hotel Higgy. Those are their dedicated parking spaces with parking permits. The bands have parking uh, passes that they see, but anyone who just says, I live here, I work here, they're allowed to come through no matter what. We'll never stop them from doing that. And that parking lot never fills up. And we just want to ensure that it never fills up so they feel like they can still access business. I do have conversations with all those businesses to let them know it's coming. Uh, there's one business in particular who isn't excited about it, but we do. Uh, I gave her my phone number. I explained her the situation, said that they could still park here. Um. And that's really all we could do to make it safe. We we did uh, two years ago, ask, can we allow them to drive all the way through? And it was the sheriffs who said it's not, it's not safe for them to do so. So this is kind of our. Working with them thing to do. Uh, same with anybody who's at Hotel San Marcos, should someone still live there. Uh, throughout the course of the year. We do work individually with that person to like, give them access to their in and out until we have to do a hard closure on Friday. And then we work with them directly and having conversations. You need to come out. We have a gator. We'll come pick you up. We'll take you to your car. You show up later to call us. And so we've done that kind of stuff with them too. And Ray, Ray's been a great partner in in kind of working through that with us as well, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Just wanted to make sure we were closing the loop on all that.
Yeah, and now with the new business also on Avenue of the Flags, uh, at uh, I forget the address that. It's the new uh, it's where the ramp goes in the middle of. So that's a new conversation we have to have this year we've never had before, uh, where Restaurant Plus. Uh, benefits from the event because they're selling all their products to all our food vendors. So they love the event, right? So he's like, yeah. Do whatever you want. This is great. So. As we continue, uh, we've already had conversations with Tonios and and all the other businesses, but there's a new business in town where I'm going to physically go and have that conversation with them. And try to figure out the best way for us to work together.
Thank you very much for your diligence on that. All right, any other questions or if not, we can bring it back for staff discussion and a possible, oh, I'm sorry, is there any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll bring it back then to staff to uh, council discussion and a possible motion.
So I moved to approve the event and the funding request. Is that acceptable?
You can do that.
Okay, I, that's the motion.
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor Lewis.
Aye.
Councilmember Hornick.
Aye.
Councilmember Mead.
Aye.
Uh, Mayor Silva.
I, I'm still here, Linda. All right, moving right along. Thank you very much for your time tonight. All right, next up we have item number twelve, which is resolution, thank you. Resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-seven, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, amending the monthly wastewater service fees and low income program in the city of Buellton. And our staff contact tonight is Public Works Director Rose Ness.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. So at the July tenth, twenty twenty-five City Council Meeting, Council approved Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-three. Which sets forth the five-year increases to the monthly water and sewer fees. Um, during that meeting, of course, the concerns were raised regarding affordability for low-income customers. So staff did additional research um, as far as options available. First item we'll we'll touch on is the low-income programs. There aren't any available specifically for water and sewer. Um, but in looking at other public utilities, both PG&E and SoCal Gas, Still Cal Gas Utilities. Both offer a California alternate rates of energies called CARE program, which provides a monthly discount of twenty percent. On gas and electric um, rates for qualified customers. And both PG&E and SoCal Gas Programs. Has an extensive vetting process that's already um. Been used by those utility companies. Uh, so that is something that is. The city can look at and consider. Uh, the city wouldn't, isn't proposing to do its own separate. Um, vetting for these programs. The customers. Uh, if the council so chooses, we would use the PG&E and SoCal Gas Programs as a means for eligibility for a reduced rate for low-income customers within the city. Uh, so the vetting is already done by, would be done by the utility companies, either PG&E or SoCal Gas. Whichever one the customer um, has qualified for as to provide proof. So there's just a bullet, quick bullet point of qualifications. If the city were to have a program. The city customer would have, must have the city waters to reveal in their name. The customer must live at the address to which this this, the discount applies. And then the customer must provide proof of qualification and approval within either PG&E or SoCal Gases Care Programs. Um, the customer would then be required to to submit the proof of those qualifications every two years. I believe that's the. Renewal period for both utility programs to continue receive a twenty percent discount. Um, off the total monthly water and sewer bill upon approval of the application. Um, one of the items, you know, for discussion is eligibility for low-income customers. It's already in arrears. Generally. Um, when a customer fall into arrears, they enter into a payment program with the city um, over a period of time and they'll catch up. Um, but that's just a another point of consideration for that. The other um, item for discussion tonight is regarding the monthly sewer charges, particularly for the mobile home parks classification. Um, looking at the sewer line item for the monthly sewer charge. For the mobile home parks per additional units, additional dwelling unit, the current approved rate is. Ranges from forty-six sixty-two to eighty-one ninety-six um, per month. As approved in the study. So what we've done is looked at this additional dwelling unit for the mobile home. Units to reduce that by fifty percent of the recommended rates. And in review those amounts, the reduction of the approved rates by fifty percent, fifty percent would result in a minimal reduction of the revenue forecast. And that wouldn't create a significant impact to the revenues for sewer that we would anticipate. Um, you'll see in the table in the staff report that that. Reduction of the ADU charge for mobile home park units by fifty percent only reduces the revenue by about five percent. Um, and that's something that's um, that we're able to accommodate within the budget and expenditures. So with that, those are two proposals and um, reviewing. The rates and the potential amendments. For the monthly rates for water and wastewater uh, for low income and considerations. And staff is recommending that council review and discuss and provide staff with. And staff is recommending that council review and discuss and provide staff with further direction. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Rose. All right, we'll bring it for, um, council questions this time. Councilmember Sanchez, any questions?
No, uh, for discussion, but no questions. So, all right, I guess I do the, um, are we, are we choosing either one or are we choosing both? Are we, we want to reduce the sewer rates for the, uh, mobile homes? Is that a set?
Yes, so you could do, you could do both. Both are an option. The rates for the classification for mobile home parks, that's, you know, would be the proposals to reduce that ADU classification by fifty percent. And then of sound council so chooses to, um, enact a low-income program. We would utilize PG&E and SoCal Gases care programs as the vetting process in order to do that. And that would allow a reduction of twenty percent off the customer's bill for monthly water and sewer.
And the the chart you haven't read, that's basically what they used to pay. Or, uh, it's, they were paying half of the sewer at the.
Yeah, so, so the Exhibit A in the resolution, the the red numbers that's in the chart, that is the reduction, that's already reduced by fifty percent.
And that's what.
So those would be the, those would be the new proposed, um, rates for the additional units.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, Councilmember Hornick?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to piggyback on, uh, Councilmember Sanchez's question. So, uh, Rose, you said that, um, uh, PG&E and SoCal Gas do the vetting. Do you know how they do the vetting? What's the.
Do they have an application process and, um, they have to submit, I believe, income statements. Sorry, I had that information here and my screen went.
Give me a minute if you want. I'm just curious, like, you know, how do, how do people determine if they qualify?
Right, so both, both SoCal Gas and PG&E, their qualification requirements are pretty similar. And they have to do an application process, submitting, um, income statements and, um, other household information. So that goes through that public utility. Do you, are you looking for what all the specific parts of their application that they're requesting?
Yeah, is, I mean, like, if you qualify for subsidized, you know, uh, food vouchers that they qualify or how, what's, what's the metric?
I have it, I have it here right now. So it says, um, you must meet specific household income guidelines or certain public assistance programs such as CalFresh, Food Stamps, Medi-Cal, or the National School Lunch Program. So it seems like it might be, it's kind of their, like, overall baseline.
Right, and they also have household income guidelines that's required. And additional information here. They have number of households and total gross annual income requirements. They look at everything, uh, including wages, salaries, um, public assistance, rental information. And the whole suite of different programs if you're already participating in these other public assistance programs.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, Councilmember Mead?
Uh, no, thank you.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
No questions.
Uh, I just had two. One would be that if, so just to confirm here, we have the mobile home parks, which we see the rate there. And the mobile home parks per additional unit, which would then qualify for, this would be for any mobile home park resident in the city of Beelton, correct? It's not like there's a difference between our different structures of mobile home parks and like styles or lot sizes or things like that?
No, we, and we, we have two mobile home parks within the city, so.
Perfect. And my other one is with the fifty percent reduction on the wastewater, would the, the, you, from what I'm hearing is that the way that we have this currently written is that if we adopted the CARE program, it would be twenty percent off of the water and twenty percent off of the sewer at the new rate. So if you were twenty three thirty one or, um, your wastewater plant or your sewage plant, which you have wastewater, that would be an additional four dollars and sixty cents off of that if you also qualified in the CARE program. So it's kind of you. Both programs?
No, so our two mobile home parks, um, our customers with that is the mobile home park. So their per-unit charge for ADU is the fifty percent. Now, the seniors living there, they are not the direct customers of the city.
That's right.
They pay directly whatever it is the mobile home park charges on there. The low income applies to a direct customer of the city.
Got you. So the mobile home park discussion we're having for wastewater is the only available assistance we can do based upon how they, their, their system is set up. But the CARE program would work for any resident in the city of Beelton who's a customer who qualifies through the various programs is what we're, we're looking at here. So the CARE program could not be taken advantage of by the, um, mobile home park residents.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, um, without further questions, I'll just check in for if there's any public comment on the item.
Sure.
Okay, we'll bring it back for discussion at this time. Um, Councilmember Sanchez.
Yeah, the, um, I think this, uh, this deal, uh, tying us with the PG&E uh, lets them do the qualifying and I appreciate that we're not going to have to, uh, spend time doing that. It's a, it's something already predetermined and, and I appreciate that, that we don't have to waste our money or waste our time trying to have a new program and I, and I think that'll work out well. And, uh, I also would support the half, uh, at the mobile home park. I think that's, this is, it's what we can do and I appreciate we can do that. Thank you.
Me too.
Councilor, or Councilmember Hornick?
Second.
Oh, we're not motioning. Okay. Uh, Councilmember Mead.
I also agree with, uh, Councilmember Sanchez.
I agree as well. I just would like us all to kind of have a quick discussion. The, the further consideration is the eligibility for, uh, the low-income customers already in arrears. I think we all agree that we want to approve the CARES program. We want to approve PG&E, you know, doing it for us. And we want to approve the fifty percent of the fifty percent for the mobile homes. So I don't think that's an issue. But what is everyone's thought on those customers already in arrears? And I don't see a recommendation regarding customers in arrears. So I'm wondering, Chanel, if you have a recommendation for us with regards to those customers already in arrears?
Um, uh, we really haven't discussed that solution. Um, and the fact is because those that are on our ears are typically on our shut-off list every month. And they're, in order to be removed from that list, they're already set up in a payment plan. So, I mean, me and Sarah have talked about it a little bit. Um, but there, I mean, in, in my opinion, I think they're protected by that payment plan already.
So in your opinion, it's fine to say that we would like to approve the CARES plan the way that it's presented here and basically do nothing with the arrears, no changes, because they're either going to already be in arrears and still get the twenty percent off, you know, moving forward, or they'll work with the payment plan. But basically, the twenty percent would be moving forward as of the approval of this program. And we don't need to do anything specific. And we would not want to bar those already in arrears who are already struggling from accessing the program because it wouldn't really benefit them or us. Am I understanding correctly?
Yes, uh, yeah, because my, my thought is, once we approve the program, any bills from that point on, uh, those customers that if they are in arrears and qualify for the program, then they'll qualify for that twenty percent, twenty percent discount. Um, yeah, some of those people on the list are, might not call, fall under that. But again, they should, should be protected under that payment plan.
No, that was it.
Yeah, the only one I was gonna say is I think this is a great program. I think we also need to just be thoughtful and make sure that we're diligent with the outreach on this and the uptake and adoption of it. So I think that oftentimes we rely on digital media to kind of get that out. But if we are dealing with people who maybe aren't as digitally savvy, um, I'd also make sure that this program is, or this details are also listed and explained in a Spanish piece as well to ensure that we have that just so that it's as accessible as possible. So we can educate community members about the benefit.
Is included in the water bill?
I'm sorry?
Can we just include that in the water bill? I mean, that's, everybody's gonna get a water bill. And then they'll have, then that.
Yeah, I, I don't know how I get my water bill still. I, because I think I do it all online. But yeah, I think if you get a print for, yeah, I, I don't know. Yes, I would say at least making sure there's language in the water bill encouraging people to do that would be great.
Yeah, the water bill and the Beelton buzz and all of the paper that we, paper outreach that we do, we can definitely do it in both. So, yeah.
And next month, we do not have the Beelton buzz. So we do have one page available to go out with the water bills. Um, we have the, uh, Beelton art on one side already reserved. So on the other side, we can do half Spanish, half English on the program.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Um, is there a motion to approve at this time?
Good thinking, Sol.
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right.
Okay, Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Mead.
Hi.
Councilmember Hornick.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Mayor Silva.
Hi. Thank you very much. I know that was a lot of work on the staff to make this happen. So I really appreciate that. All right, moving along, we will now go to item, the artist formerly known as Item Five, now Item Thirteen, which is consideration of MOU with SB CAG for the Sanas Valley River Trail, Santa Ynez Valley Regional Community Connector. And our staff contact is Public Works Director Rose Hess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Member City Council. So this is an MOU with SB CAG, who is our MPO for, um, Santa Barbara County area. Um, and essentially it is in agreement with SB CAG to help us facilitate moving forward with the San Ynez River Trail portion for the city's, um, area. The city had received a grant, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the state. This is funding administration, environmental preliminary plans, basically the front-end portions of the city portions of the river trail. Um, SB CAG again would be help us facilitate moving the project forward, preparing the RFPs for consulting services and help, um, us with environmental and coordination with the other agencies as, you know, we work on the larger connector trail as well. We have Mr. Fred Luna from SB CAG here available in the audience to answer any questions. Um, just some clarifying information, we do have the four hundred and twenty-five thousand and we are going to do as much of the front-end work as that can cover. We anticipate that covering a lot of public outreach and workshops, um, environmental and preliminary designs that we're hoping that would stretch us up to thirty percent designs for the project. Design for the project has not been determined yet. Um, the city has easements obtained on the south, um, city limits for the city from Riverview Park, west, uh, easterly up through, um, Avenue Flags, just east of Avenue Flags with the Flying Flags, um, Resort Park. We do have easements east of, um, McMurray Road for properties and developments that's been developing down there as well. Um, so we've got, we've been inching our way as far as what properties and easements that we have available to make the San Ynez River Trail through Beelton, um, possible. Um, but design has not been worked on yet. That is going to be part of this process. We still have to work through a lot of other regulatory agencies, Fish and Wildlife, Fish and Game. And so there's a lot of, um, details still associated with the project that will need to be flushed out. So with that, um, I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
And if it's okay with the council, I know we have representatives from SB CAG. I don't know if before we get into questions, if you wanted to speak at all on the items here.
Good evening, Mayor Silva and councilmembers, Fred Luna with the, uh, SB CAG, um, Project Delivery Director. And, um, just to expand on what Rose was saying, um, first of all, we're excited to get this project started, um, and, uh, help the city of Beelton. I'm a resident of Beelton, so, uh, I'm excited about the project. And I'm here with Tom Vo, he's a planner at SB CAG. And so jointly, we're going to be working on this project to help the city of Beelton. I think first and foremost, we'd like to get, um, as Rose indicated, um, a specialist consultant on board. Um, we do have some concept plans and we know a lot of work that the city and the region have done related to the trail. And so it's really about formulating kind of the next steps. And as Rose indicated, confirming with this council and the public, you know, the alignment, um, through the city of Beelton. And then, um, doing the environmental documents of that were certified under CEQA and then moving forward on the design. And, um, so we're ready to, um, do that. Uh, Vice Mayor, uh, Lewis was at our, um, board meeting last week. And so she heard the presentation that was given about our approach, our methodology. We're ready to, uh, hire a consultant and move that forward. We're working through, um, agreements with our various partners, um, County of Santa Barbara. Ultimately, the city is solving. We have an agreement with the Chumash because this trail is going to go from Beelton all the way to Highway one fifty-four. So, um, a lot of different moving parts, uh, but, um, hopefully I can answer any questions. I'll leave it at that right now.
Any questions?
As you're hiring consultants, what is your budget for hiring consultants?
So, um, we have a, we have this, we're going to be utilizing, the MOU allows SB CAG to utilize the State Parks Grant. That's, um, the city of Beelton has, that's four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, um, that, um, has scope to deliver, um, some public outreach, some design and the environmental document. And the design, um, we're going to pause that at thirty percent, but ultimately we have to deliver a contract, uh, contract documents, basically construction-ready documents. So we may need to supplement that with some outside funding that comes from, um, the Third District, um, Supervisor Hartman is also um, working with the county, contributing some funds. But we're going to try to advance the project forward with that. And so that's kind of our current budget that we're working with. And that's what spelled out in the MOU, um, before the city tonight.
And the four twenty foot.
The four twenty five.
Five, is that just Beelton's?
That's Beelton's portion. The total budget is a little over a million dollars of money that we have from other grants.
Could you speak to, you just said the, the District Three contribution. We might need some of that, who would have before?
Um, District Three, um, a few years ago, set aside some funding for supplemental work to help manage the project, hire, either hire consultants or doing work in the county. But, um, uh, she, uh, supervisor Hartman was willing to kind of, for the benefit of the whole regional connector, um, share some of that money for, because we're working on this as kind of a overall project, even though our goal is to prioritize the city of Beelton's component first because we have more advanced deadlines with that grant. Uh, that needs to be all finished by twenty twenty-seven. So, um, the other grants that we have are expiring in twenty twenty-eight.
So that kind of, can I speak? I have my question. Okay. Uh, so that kind of speaks to my, my other questions. Um, so for the design for Beelton, right? If, if, if SB CAG is handling the MOU and we still are up in the air about design and design will impact CEQA and environmental review. And because it's a multi-agency thing, right? What I, what I would not like to see is Beelton's ready to go.
Yeah.
But other agencies are not. And so therefore waiting or another agency wants to make this a long road instead of a trail. And then we have to come back and, and you see how that could devolve.
Yeah, that's, um, and so, uh, as staff with SB CAG, we see that tension there. And, and so what we're trying to do is we're developing for the consultant right now, um, two different kinds of work packages they work on, one specific to Beelton that's more kind of advanced. It's a, there's, you get, as Rose indicated, alignments are, you have easements already. So the alignments can easily be certified or vetted through whatever public outreach process the city wants to and will work with your staff and, and provide updates to the council as necessary. So, um, and I think that could go much faster than in other areas of the county where they're struggling with maybe different varieties of alternatives that they, they are seeking through solving or, um, not at advanced in that area between solving and built. And so that's our commitment that we would want to get that done initially in a little faster track, but still use the same consultant because for us, it's economies of scale, having one consultant work on the whole project. But two different work packages so that they can then start the sequence work and then the design work.
And then one thing to also note, the trail, you know, is going to look different throughout as it moves along the different communities. Um, so I, you know, it's never envisioned that it's going to be this singular type look of trail or connector throughout all, you know, Beelton solving and the county and the Chumash area. It's going to be, um, relevant to the community and to the terrain.
Is that, is that baked into our understanding and that? Is that, is that baked into our understanding in the MOU?
That's our understanding as well. Yeah, that, that the, yeah, that as we advance the project, it will, it will be different in the sense that some areas are wanting to see equestrians as well. Some um, some areas like within the city of solving, um, you know, there's limited opportunities. Some of it's going to be on-street improvements. Um, so this is what Rose is kind of alluding to, that we're making some modifications where it could be a little different in some areas. And then it ultimately, when it gets to solving out by Alamo Pantato, it's gonna, there's an existing trail already there. It's mostly a class one facility that goes out to the high school. So you don't have horses, ability to have horses on that. Um, so yeah, it's gonna look different in different areas, but ultimately, it's gonna be a connector um, from one fifty four to um, the city of Buellton, Riverview Park.
I think that's great. The only, the only thing that I would be concerned with is, is this question is, can another agency hold up the development of Buellton's trail if we enter into this contract? This is equal parts to you and to Rose.
Yeah, I, I don't think so. Like I said, we are in a much more forward position than the other agencies, um, as in we, we have half of our alignment already kind of laid out by the easements we've obtained. Um, so we are way further along. So the goal is to move our portions of the areas that we have easements for. You know, i- i- if it's just Riverview Park to Avenue of Flags or Riverview Park to McMurray, um, we move forward as far as possible as we can, you know, to get to as far as design. Um, and then we have a package ready to go, to go after other grants for, you know, construction and um, completion of design if we need to.
And I, I would concur with that. That's our, that's our mission too, is deliver the city's project. Because we know the city has grants and we don't want that to be delayed by other maybe preliminary work that's going on elsewhere in the region. But overall, the phased plan is to get the whole trail um, built. Um, so we want to leverage this opportunity with Buellton and um, and make sure we deliver on the requirements of your grant.
So I know I said that was my last question, but that did trigger one more.
Sorry, but you're cut off.
So if um, I guess I'm getting caught up on secret review. I- i- if the other agencies don't have a unified design. And I know you mentioned that you're gonna do two tracks, Program Project A for Buellton, Project B for the United Joint Powers for all of the, all of the agencies. This, I, my understanding was one of the benefits of having the grant secured that we did and joining with the Chumash was to secure larger grants because that would help us fund a larger CEQA analysis for entire project. So is your Project A for Buellton going to be dependent on the Project B getting approved for the multi-agency members? That was clear enough.
It is clear and it is something that um, we've been thinking a lot about. There's benefits and pros and cons with either, but I think what we, where we've landed is that it's of most benefit for Buellton to set, really segregate that project and have that project's environmental stand on itself because we have the funding to move that forward. Everybody else is just, is not ready to move and we don't have a lead agency for the rest of the, a CEQA lead agency for the rest of it yet, determined. And so if city of Buellton is ready to be the CEQA lead agency and advance that work, you know, I think that will move along much more quickly.
Very cool. What was your name?
I'm Fred Luna.
I think so. We're gonna, we're gonna be the ones that design and approve the design, us, right?
Well, I, that was my question.
We'll work with your staff to determine the, the best process to come back to the city, your planning commission, however that may work, but um, um, yeah, we'll work with uh, Andrea and uh, and Rose and make sure that um, we're being, and well, we'll, we're open to providing reports to your council as well.
Yeah, I was just gonna add on to that, that, you know, we are obviously concurrently working on the general plan update. So obviously, the work that's going on with this is very related to our general plan update process. So if there are opportunities for public outreach that could sort of join in those two efforts, that would be really, I think, of benefit.
Great, yeah. And I just, I'm not sure when you're supposed to say this, so I'll just say it now. I actually had a meeting with Joan Hartman about this yesterday, so I just wanted to put that out there in public record. Um, but that is my biggest, my, when you think about uh, uh, everyone looking at all this, I was just, Mike, I talked to Rose about this as well, and I was just wondering what, if you had a thought about public outreach, but if it's gonna be worked into the general plan, that sounds great.
I think that's something that we can talk about.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just, yeah, that sounds amazing. Yes, Rose, thank you.
All our grants have a public outreach component, so I think we won't be lacking. We just want to be efficient with how we do that and work with your.
It's like, I was just like, what does that look like? When I see the seventy five thousand dollars, I think that's great, but I'm more like, what does, do you have an idea of what that looks like? Or you're like, I'm just gonna work with the city, we'll come up with the best plan and then we'll do it together, which is also a financer.
Yeah, yeah, but you know, you've done a lot of different kind of techniques and strategies. So yeah, we'll, we'll be in discussions with.
Okay, yeah, great, thank you.
Vice Mayor Lewis, any questions?
No.
Uh, my only one was just to confirm that it's a, if we do not consume the grant that was secured, that it, it has until the end date of twenty twenty six or twenty twenty seven, sorry?
June of twenty seven.
June of twenty seven is, and if we don't use it, it will be lost, reclaimed.
So we did.
Our goal is not to let that.
Yeah, our goal is not to let that happen. And there are opportunities to seek a time extension. We've already had those conversations because we're kind of getting a late start on this. So um, you know, we're um, so we're looking to, to extend it one additional year, so that'll give us ample time to.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, and I don't, I, you were also already, thank you for being so diligent. You filled out the public comment form, so I appreciate that. Um, was there any other public comment on this at this time?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Luna. We appreciate your time here. Great, so we'll bring it back then for uh, council discussion and possible motion.
Second.
Great, right along.
Hey, Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Hornick.
Hi.
Councilmember Mead.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Mayor Silva.
Hi. Thank you very much for your time tonight. All right. Moving a lot, right along here, we will now go to our city manager. And we did properly acknowledge that, thank you for stepping in for uh, City Manager Scott Wolf for being out tonight, so we appreciate you running the helm of this.
Absolutely. And, and on that note, I was just going to mention, because the city manager is out on vacation, I don't have anything for, to report to you tonight.
Great. So with that, that's pretty, oh, sorry, we should just check with the, our turn?
Absolutely not.
Great, love that. So um, I do know that our next meeting, our, thank you very much, Simon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next meeting is being canceled because of the league conference, so our actual next meeting will be
The twenty third.
Twenty third.
Okay, so our next meeting will be on Thursday, October twenty third at six PM. Thank you all and have a great night.